Be nice if we did it over.
Yeah. I can't wait a minute, I gotta get my.
Have it out.
Get my. Put away the stuff that I don't need.
We're gonna start with closing, closing.
Oh, this is Eisenhower's jazz. I just saw the EHS. Cool. We are reconvening at seven twenty P. M. At this time, Mr. Islam will report out of closed session.
Thank you, President Gilbert. In closed session, board authorized and anticipated litigations to proceed. The other decisions board made in closed sessions. In closed session, the board took actions that employee number one zero seven nine one one four shall be released from the administrative position of senior coordinator, student welfare and attendance effective June thirty, twenty fourteen, and shall be reassigned to the position of director, student welfare and attendance, two hundred fifteen days for the fiscal year, two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year. In closed session, the board took actions that employee number one one six one two one four shall be released from the administrative position of coordinator, professional development effective June thirty, twenty fourteen, and shall be reassigned to the position of senior coordinator, professional development, two hundred fifteen days for the two thousand fourteen, fifteen. In closed sessions, board took actions that employee number one four eight seven three one four shall be released from the administrative position of senior director, elementary education effective June thirty, twenty fourteen, and shall be reassigned to the position of elementary principal for the two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year. In closed session, the board took actions that employee number one eight three eight three one four shall be released from the administrative position of coordinator, professional development effective June thirty, twenty fourteen, shall be reassigned to the position of senior coordinator, professional development, two hundred fifteen days for the two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year. In closed session, board took actions that employee number one eight four eight three one four shall be released from the administrative position of senior director, professional development effective June thirty, twenty fourteen, and shall be reassigned to the position of associate superintendent, secondary instructions, two hundred forty-eight days for the two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year. In closed session, the board took actions that employee number one four seven one six one four shall be released from the administrative position of senior director, quality education investment act effective June thirty, twenty fourteen, and shall be reassigned to the position of executive director, secondary instruction, two hundred fifteen days for the two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year. In closed session, the board took actions that employee number one one five three nine one four shall be released from the administrative position of senior director, secondary education effective June thirty, twenty fourteen, and shall be reassigned to the position of principal, continuation of high school, two hundred ten days for the two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year. In closed session, the board took actions that employee number one three seven four nine one four shall be released from the administrative position of elementary principal effective June thirty, twenty fourteen, and shall be reassigned to the position of director, English learner, two hundred fifteen days for the two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year. In closed session, board took actions that employee number one six four one zero two four shall be released from the administrative position of senior director, categorical programs effective June thirty, twenty fourteen, and shall be reassigned to the position of executive director, elementary instructions and educational technology, two hundred fifteen days for the two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year. In closed session, the board took actions that employee number one three eight one zero two four shall be released from the administrative position of principal, continuation of high school, effective June thirty, twenty fourteen, and shall be reassigned to the position of senior coordinator, counseling services, two hundred fifteen days for the two hundred, for the two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year. In closed session, board took actions that employee number one nine two five zero two four shall be released from the administrative position of elementary principal, effective June thirty, twenty fourteen, and shall be reassigned to the position of director, categorical and special program, two hundred fifteen days for the two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year. In closed session, the board took actions that employee number one two six nine seven two four shall be released from the administrative position of categorical administrator, English learner, effective June thirty, twenty fourteen, and shall be reassigned to the position of coordinator, English learner, two hundred ten days for the two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year. Continuing on, in closed session, the board took actions that employee number one two zero one three two four shall be released from the administrative position of director, special program and education technology effective June thirty, twenty fourteen, and shall be reassigned to the position of senior director, assessment, research, data analysis and education technology, two hundred fifteen days for the two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year. In closed session, the board took actions that employee number one six nine five four two four shall be released from the administrative position of coordinator, special education effective June thirty, twenty fourteen, and shall be reassigned to the position of director, carrier and technical education, college outreach program, two hundred fifteen days for the two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year. In closed session, the board took actions that employee number one seven three eight five two four shall be released from the administrative position of executive director, program improvement effective June thirty, twenty fourteen, and shall be reassigned to the position of associate superintendent, elementary instruction, two hundred forty, forty-eight days for the two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year. In closed session, board took actions that employee number one nine seven eight nine two four shall be released from the administrative position of director, English learner, effective June thirty, twenty fourteen, and shall be reassigned to the position of classroom teachers, hundred eighty-four days for the two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year. The local board was, was. I believe it was five, five zero.
Yes.
No, it was, I'm sorry, let me read the local board. Mrs. Gilbert, president, yes. Mrs. Ayala, vice president, yes. Mr. Martinez, clerk, yes. And I'm sorry, Mr. Martinez abstained?
It was a no.
It was a no.
Oh, I'm sorry, it was no. And Mr. Montez, board member, yes. Mrs. O'Kelly, member, yes. So there's a four and one no. Thanks for correction. Copies of the resolutions are available for the public in the lobby. Continue to the next items. In closed sessions, board took actions that employee number one seven six eight one three four shall be released from the administrative position of director, risk management, effective June thirty, twenty fourteen, shall be reassigned to the position of senior director, risk management and transportation, two hundred fifteen days for the, for the two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year. Local board was five zero. In closed session, the board took action to not renew the employment contract of his associate superintendent, education services for the two thousand fifteen, sixteen school year pursuant to the Education Code Section three five zero three one and the directive the superintendent designated to send out appropriate legal notices. The local board was five zero. In closed session, the board took action to not renew the employment contract of his deputy superintendent, chief of staff for the two thousand fifteen, sixteen school year pursuant to the Education Code Section three five zero three one and directed the superintendent designated to send out appropriate legal notices. The local board was five zero. The Board of Education approved in closed session, I'm sorry, in closed session, the Board denied the request for an extension of leave of absence for classified employee number one eight one zero three one four, school secretary effective May twenty eighth two thousand fourteen through November twenty eighth, two thousand fourteen. The local board was five zero. The next two resolutions, the resolution number one three dash one four dash seven two. Are you ready? Okay, that's all boarding, the decision board action was taken in closed session. Thank you very much.
Point of order, board president. I think for clarification, the abstention was for litigation. There was one abstention, it was against litigation.
That's correct. The first items I reported out is the litigations, it was a four, yes, one abstain. Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Montez. May I have a motion to adjourn closed session?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. O'Kelly.
And second.
Thank you, Mr. Ayala. And we will close, adjourn closed session at seven thirty. Now, we will reconvene open session. And tonight, we will have a full school board meeting.
Point. We didn't take a official.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm so rushed to get into our meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Thank you, Mr. Martinez. And now we will move to our full school board meeting with the pledge of allegiance. And Mr. Noten will lead us in the pledge from Eisenhower. Please come on down, Eisenhower's school band director.
Stand and place your right hand over your heart. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the business of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Noten, I was so in such a hurry to get you started with our famous Eisenhower jazz band, please come on in.
Ms. Gilbert.
Yes.
I request this group to come present tonight, and I thank the director, band director, appreciate that he, he really accepted my invitations to come to the, tonight board to see our talent, our students in our school, so I hope you enjoy this program, and they're here tonight.
I'm sure we will. They will, their first selection will be Chameleon?
Yes.
And followed by Smooth Operator. So let's sit back and enjoy Eisenhower's jazz band. Thank you, Mr. Noten. Thank you.
President Gilbert, I'd like to mention to everybody that the Eisenhower Band will be having their concert on Friday night at seven o'clock, Mr. Noten?
Yes.
In the Eisenhower Gym, which is now air-conditioned, so you'll be comfortable. And so please come out and see them, these are awesome musicians.
And I would also like to say that they have been performing all the month of April. They've been just doing an excellent job throughout the city, and their last engagement was just last Friday night in the We Honor Our Own for the school district at the Orange Show. So we just really love them, and they are doing a tremendous job.
Yes.
Thank you so much. Again, we just thank these great students, tremendous talent here in Rialto. Now, we will adopt the agenda. I would like a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Montez. Preferential vote by our student board member.
Aye.
Okay, board members?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Now we will go to presentations. And first on the agenda is the D Sac annual recognition. And I'm going to ask the entire board to help me with this. So I will read this, and then we will all go out and hand out these certificates and shields to our students. For twenty-five years, the Rialto School District Board of Education has been fortunate in listening to the voice of hundreds of student leaders at our school board meetings. These district student advisory committee, D Sac students, meet once a month at the district office to enhance leadership skills and become the liaison from the district to their school sites. D Sac students are made up of three representatives from each of the four high schools and two representatives from each of the five middle schools, under the guidance of the communication services. The twenty-four-member student team has added significant changes to the district, such as adopting a new district logo to fit the twenty-first century education. D Sac students each year also make educational field trips to the Museum of Tolerance, have partnered with the Rialto Chamber and various service clubs. Tonight, we thank and honor all of our D Sac student representatives for informing us about events at schools. These students were informative and engaged and showed up with their support of their, with support of their awesome school site A S B advisors. These students were exemplary in their articulation presence, and we could observe that they enjoyed passing positive information about wonderful things happening at their school campuses to the Board of Education and viewing audiences, said interim superintendent, Mr. Muhammad Islam. We are proud of the way they all represent the Rialto Unified School District. So at this time, I want all the board members to come up front so they can each have an opportunity to shake hands and pass out certificates. Yes. Avay Isra. Avasara Ali. Kenya Staley from Carter High School. We want you to wear these proudly with your graduation robes, okay? How much more privilege can I get? Micah Saint Andrew.
What school does he come from?
Oh, he's from Eisenhower. I'm sorry, how did I forget that?
Next up, we have from Frisbee Middle School, Jordan Dixon.
Congratulations.
Next up, from Cove Middle School, we have Richard Acosta.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yolanda Magaña.
Congratulations.
Andrea Quintero.
Congratulations.
He wants a picture, Mr. Campbell.
And Andrea Sushi.
I'm ready.
Congratulations.
Let's get one for you in the room, Mr. Michael.
This person, the last name, I'm familiar with the last name. Giovanni Ayala.
Congratulations.
Next up, we have.
Next up, we have George Nunes. The Sarah Middle School. And last but not least, Jacqueline Guterres, Eisenhower High School.
Students, you guys know how to do this. Get behind your board members so your faces can be seen. The board members said that students can come up front.
You mean in front.
In front of them. No, they can get behind you guys. They know how to do it here.
Well, we're bigger than them.
It's not possible. We're gonna do it from this side, okay? Big smile. And everybody wants, yeah. One, two, three. And one, one, one. Thank you.
I would just like again to say good job to all of these students. You represented your school very well this school year. Thank you again for your service. And next on the presentation list, Mr. Ayala will do the honors to Teacher of the Year from Rialto High School, Mr. Ayala.
Well, thank you, President Gilbert. I had to read this twice because, and I'll start, but first, can I have Guadalupe Valero up here, please? Take a deep breath here, both of us. But I'm gonna read a little bit and might have her say a few words, but I'm gonna add a little bit here. Tonight, the Rialto Unified School District is proud to honor Mrs. Guadalupe Valero, which also, that first name is one of my favorite names, one of my mother's names, who was recently selected as the California State Science Fair Teacher of the Year.
Let's put this in perspective. There's 1,100 school districts in the state of California and each school district has what? At least, say, 1,000 teachers? So she's competing from a pool of over, if I did my math right, over 100,000 teachers. And we have her right here. Let's see how she did this. Ms. Valero is a 13-year veteran of the Rialto Unified School District. She began teaching at Rialto High School in 2001. Ms. Valero currently teaches 11th and 12th Grade Advanced Placement AP Biology, 9th and 10th Grade Biology, and 9th Grade Avid. Ms. Valero was nominated as the State Science Fair Teacher of the Year by one of her students, 17-year-old Edward Segura. Are you here, Edward? Come on up here, Edward. Share this moment with us. Edward, amazing. You know, sometimes you just take that step forward and look what happens. The reason I nominated, would you like to read this right here? And you might want to speak into here.
The reason I nominated Ms. Valero was because throughout my experience of being her student for two academic courses, I learned that science will always be science. It just depends on whether the teacher makes the course worth learning, and in this case, she does.
Waco, Texas. Now, I've heard that before. And she's a native who grew up and lives in Fontana, and she feels validated by this recognition. If you don't mind, or I can read it for you. You want me to read it for you?
Yes.
Okay, I'd be happy to. This is what she said. "It's no secret that most teachers hit that 13-year mark and begin to really need motivation. So I am appreciative and rejuvenated by the award." Again, she's humble. "This is such an honor and is one that I will share with my hard-working students, our parents, and staff. The single mother of two children earned her Bachelor's of Science degree, Biology, from the University of California Riverside in 2009. Valero also attended attained her Master's Degree in Education Curriculum and Instruction from California State University, San Bernardino. Teaching is our opportunity to influence the future in a positive way." She said, "I believe in the avid program. I believe in our students who are driven to succeed. And mostly, I believe that the jobs that the teachers do have the right intentions." Arnie Ayala, are you here?
Yeah, he's here.
Okay.
He's coming. He's coming out of the path.
Well, this is three Ayalas here. Please join us up here. This is part of the team, folks, and everybody gets credit.
Just want to honor you too. We got the principal, we got the teacher, we got the students, and we got another Ayala here, the board member. Okay. Principal of Rialto School, if you want to read anything, okay, was proud of one of his staff's state honor. A is an educator. Ms. Valero is passionate in her teaching as she constantly inspires her students to stretch their minds and creativity in the classroom and beyond. Her students and their achievements are a direct result of her teaching as she encourages them to seek excellence, search for answers, and continually ask questions. Ms. Valero is especially passionate about the subject of science and even more so about science fair projects as she instills excellence and encourages her students to submit interesting and challenging projects for the science fair every year. Ms. Valero's students' science projects that were selected for the district, county, state level are a testament of her instruction, guidance, and expertise of how science projects should be researched, observed, and displayed. Ms. Valero excites her students to engage in meaningful science-related activities. Ms. Valero credits her mother, Magdalena, for giving her strength, and her father, Raymond, for giving her patience. Are they here by chance? Oh, my gosh. Would you please just stand and recognize and please come on up here?
As Mr. Winton would have said, we now have the three-legged stool. Okay, we got the parents, we got the teachers, we got the staff, and we got the students. So a very proud moment for all of us. I am so fortunate to have parents who provide care for my two children so I can teach other people's kids. Are your kids here?
Yes.
Please. Oh, my goodness. Oh, my. Come on up, hug your mom. This is not rehearsed, folks. This is real and live, felt from the heart. "I am so fortunate to have parents," okay, "who provide for my children." I read that. We want to congratulate Mrs. Valero. Again, there's not enough words that we can put on paper, but I will give her a certificate of recognition to honor this moment. We'll take a picture together. We can all stand here.
Thank you so much. And if there's anything you'd like to say, put this down here.
Hi, thank you. Thank you, everyone. It really means a lot. But any teacher is only as good as her students make her. And I do want to recognize my other two students. I want them to come up here. Esmeralda Suarez and Macy Matsukawa. These are the three students who I have known for since 9th grade for the past three years, and they are the reason I had this opportunity to bring recognition, one, to my district, to my school, and to myself. They are the team that went to state. They won gold at the county level. And they were the last team to win gold was eight years ago, who were also my students. So this has been a real experience for us. Their first time, obviously, at state, and of course, they have dreams for next year as well to continue this. But like I said, I'm only as good as my students. And I'd like to think that my teaching is reflected in them. And obviously, their accomplishments support everything I try to do as a teacher. Because in the end, if they don't learn, what kind of teacher am I? So thank you all very much.
1,100 school districts.
Hey, you guys can never get a bad grade in science.
Ms. Gilbert, may I have a second here? I requested for our Wall of Fame to be begin. It's the section between the West Wing and the Superintendent's Door, and that it begin with Guadalupe Valero, State Science Teacher of the Year. Thank you, Ms. Gilbert.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. And this brings us down a nice segue to this day, April 23rd, is California Day of the Teacher. So with Ms. Lisa Lindberg, is she here?
Yes.
Where's Ms. Lindberg? Okay, we'll wait for her to get here. She's coming. All right, come on down. This is a resolution number 13-14-63. Resolution of the Board of Education of the Rialto Unified School District, California Day of the Teacher, April 23rd, 2014. Whereas this year, California will celebrate the 32nd anniversary of California Day of the Teacher with the theme, "California Teachers Inspiring Our Students, Strengthening Our Communities." And whereas teachers are an integral part of providing quality education and establishing a foundation of lifelong learning for the youth of our state, and whereas good teaching grows in value and plays pays dividend far beyond the classroom. And whereas teachers in the Rialto Unified School District help to meet the diverse needs of our students' abilities, goal, and backgrounds by using creative and innovative methods of instruction. And whereas the innovation, creativity, and problem-solving skills needed to maintain California's leading edge derived from the ability from the quality of its teachers. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the unique talents and devotion of the Rialto Unified School District teachers as one of our country's most valuable resources. And therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Rialto Unified School District recognize May 14th, 2014, as California Day of Teacher and express gratitude for the outstanding job performed by teachers in the Rialto Unified School District in preparing today's youth for the future. So I present this to you.
I'd like to say a few words as the elected representative of the teachers. I will be starting my third term, July 1st. And I'm sure the teachers and speech therapists, nurses, and counselors that I represent would want me to say thank you for this resolution. And they would also want me to say, please remember us beyond the Day of the Teacher. Remember our daily workload. Remember our caseloads. Remember our class sizes. Remember the volunteer work that we do. Remember how late we stay at night to meet with parents at different meetings. Remember how early we come to school to meet with a principal. Remember all of these things as well. And when our bargaining team goes to the table, please remember that as well. I know that's what they would want me to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. That concludes our presentations, and now we will move to public comments. Comments from the floor, and at this time, anyone wishing to speak on an item that is not on the agenda will be granted three minutes to make a presentation. Please be mindful of the clock there to let you know when your three minutes are up. Mr. Islam will call your names.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. Sally Garcia.
Is Sally Garcia here?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Sally Garcia. For the few of you on the board, you may know me. And for those of you who don't know me now, you will. I'm here to speak on behalf of the parent liaison that we have in our parent centers and the high school regarding Rialto High School as well as Eisenhower High School, particularly Eisenhower High School for me. But I know I only have three minutes, so I'm gonna try to get this really quick. I've been involved with Rialto for over 25 years. I have seven children that have attended Rialto High Schools and elementaries, and in all of those, I have always volunteered. I know most of all the administrators that have come through and passed. My, it's been my privilege to help there and, of course, help out on the volunteers. But in all of this that I've intended every time, there's one question that's always been constant that's been asked through school site council, through PTSA, through the board here. And the one same question is, how can we get parent involvement? How can we get more parent involvement? You guys ask us this every year. For the past 15 years, this has been my struggle as well, to get more parent involvement, to get us growing together. Well, we finally, every time, we try to get a little niche and we start to get going, what happens is, we get change. The parent advisor, the parent liaison, maybe it's been our administrator, whoever's been helping, and we finally start to grow, all of a sudden, the following year, they get changed. They get pulled, removed, switched positions, whatever way you want to call it. When you guys do this, this causes a problem because now we have to start all over again. This is a continuation. I'm asking you guys to stop the continuation. If we do not continue to keep with the parent liaisons that we have, we cannot grow. We have parent advisors or parent liaisons that are in our schools right now, two in particular at these high schools that have worked very hard this year, very hard. They have grown. We went from zero to either 20. We went from zero to either 20, and I know in Rialto High School, they went from zero to 100. You cannot get that growth without somebody accomplishing something. You ask us what to change, what to help, we're telling you, this is what we need, this is where we need the help. You have the power now to change it. You've asked us, we're giving you the information. I'm asking you, please do not take our parent liaisons from us. You can replace them with someone else, but it will not be the same. We will have to start all over again. We need these people to stay with us, because we're already working together as a team. Work with us, too. Thank you.
I hope I'm saying right.
Good evening, dear board members, interim superintendent Mohammed C. Islam, and audience. My name is Nativeda Manzanera. I'm a proud Rialto High School parent. Today, I'm coming to you representing a group of concerned parents, students, and staff, regarding this board's decision to eliminate the position of intervention liaison of Rialto, and also Eisenhower High Schools, and asking for you to reconsider such a decision. This position plays an important role at our schools, so struggling students are able to overcome and succeed in their efforts to graduate high school and have a brighter future. Many stories are proof of this statement. Ms. Maria Lopez has been working with Rialto High School as an intervention liaison for some years. She is dedicated to infuse the students with self-esteem, to accomplish their dreams, and to provide guidance and support when they are having behavioral issues. She holds them accountable for their actions and creates a bridge between student and parent to understand each other. She is always available to help them when necessary. But her commitment does not stop there. Ms. Lopez is willing to help many other supporting activities throughout the school. She helps with translations, assisting the nurse, covering the receptionist when needed. And this year, she has done an astonishing job with the Rialto High School Parent Center. Our parent center has won first place in parent participation in the district, as Sally mentioned. Our numbers have grown in parent participation. As we are very well aware, our schools have been suffering from budget cuts, and we have lost many valuable personnel at our district, leaving the current staff with many issues to fill in. Many times, they have to take the job of two or more people to service of students, parents, and the community. This is not an exemption for Rialto High, that lost an assistant principal, three of their eight counselors, two parent liaison, and some attendance clerks last year. Losing another staff member will be devastating. So we are asking for you to please reconsider these positions, so that our parent support can continue. Thank you.
Next, Hardy Brown, the board member of County Superintendent's Schools.
Good evening, board. Superintendent Islam, president of the board. Just wanted to come by and just say, thank you so much for all the things, all the great work that you're doing. I've had a chance to visit a number of the schools over the last couple of weeks, and really proud to see some of the great accomplishments of the students here in Rialto Unified School District. Today, I wanted to introduce a friend of mine. He just flew in from Washington, DC, and I wanted to give a little bit of my time to him. His name is Kim Wells. He is the Director of the EMBA School and Executive Education at Howard University in Washington, DC. He's speaking at UCR tomorrow morning, and he's going to be doing a lecture on all the different things worldwide, some of the things they're doing at Howard University. And I wanted to make sure that I brought him through to at least introduce him to the district and to some of the great families here within the district. So with that, I wanted to introduce Kim Wells.
Thank you, thank you. Welcome from Washington, DC, and Howard University. We are a very proud, historically black college, and founded in 1867. And part of my visit here is, we are, I'm the Director of Executive Education, the EMBA Executive Education Programs. Also, I oversee recruitment for some of the MBA programs for the university. And so fortunately, a couple of years ago, Hardy had me out, and we were able to recruit a couple of students from the area. So we were very excited about that, from the Riverside University. And I'm back today, this next couple of days, to really talk to them and see if I can get some interest going. Our program, our particular, our EMBA and our MBA, we're very big on global education, very big on preparing students to be competitive in the United States and the global business community. And we've seen remarkable success over the years, and I know it goes right back to the earlier days, the younger days, and hearing some of the stories and some of the testimonies tonight, just reminds me of why it matters, as I was telling him, coming here today, while we're in education, to create access to some of the finer universities, to prepare our young people for leadership in the United States, here in California, too. We can help you with that at Howard as well. But again, thank you. I just wanted to say hello, any students or any parents that are interested in sending their young people to the Washington, DC area, it's a fine area to go to school. You know, you have George this, George that, and some other schools, but Howard University is one of the top business schools in Washington, DC, so we'd love to have you. All right, thank you.
Next, Chris Mesa. Chris Mesa, M-E-Z-A. I hope I'm saying, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Chris Mesa, and I'm here to talk tonight about Measure Y, and just raise some potential concerns and potential issues. And it's quite a contrast to talk about such a somber topic, and you know, right after all the celebrations we've been having, but I think you kind of captured it in the last award, with the teacher that was happy, but at the same time, had to communicate a message of disappointment. And you see that tension in a lot of the employees at the district. As it relates to Measure Y, in January this past year, your accounting firm released a statement saying that, for the most part, everything was fine with the audit. And then, three days earlier, Fitmat released a report stating there was, you know, significant financial mismanagement. So the contrast there is also quite visible. And a few major points jumped out that I'd like to bring to your attention, hopefully get some resolution and some answers on. Primarily, when an organization is overseeing $100 million of taxpayer money, you want to make sure it's safe and secure. And this organization has a history of fiscal mismanagement. You lost $3 million. So when you lose that type of money, the public raises questions as to what type of controls are in place to assure that taxpayer money is safe. In the 2013 auto report, there's a $9 million asset reported on the balance sheet, which is irreceivable from the RUSD General Fund. Sure, entirely legal, obviously, but appropriate is another matter. And in light of the Fitmat report, and excessive trophies and contracts with Nike, and ESPN Zone dinners, every dollar that you borrowed from Measure Y money, as a result of fiscal mismanagement, is inappropriate, at least in my perspective. And I'm sure it's an opinion that many others share. In fact, it's an opinion that one of your board members shares, because in the February 2013 minutes, one of your board members said that they had issues with how the money was being spent. Ms. Paula Brown, in October 2013, also said that she had questions of the $1 million other costs line item. The $69,711 in check fees is quite alarming. I know we're writing some big checks, but $70,000 in check fees is kind of high. $185,000 in consulting fees. It's the lack of visibility and the lack of confidence in this board, which is why I'm here. I'd like to ask that the minutes be placed online, which they are not since early 2013. The prospectus for Measure Y said that the community would constantly be informed, and it's not. You go on the RUSD website, you cannot find the documents that should be there. Where are the minutes for the last year? On that note, simply please work with the community to give us more visibility to where our money's being spent. Instead of being wasted, you know, there's a lot of teachers and students that could use those funds. Thank you.
That's all.
That's it. Thank you. That concludes public comments on non-agenda items. Do we have any items that are on the agenda?
None.
None. All right, thank you. Mr. Islam, now we will move to open, public hearing. We will open public hearing. Any person wishing to speak on an item on the public hearing agenda will be granted three minutes to make a presentation.
Ms. Gilbert, I think we need to go item number two and three on the public comment. Item three, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I beg your pardon.
That's all right.
Comments from Association Executive Board members.
Hi, I'm Linda Silva, and I am on the executive board for CSEA. I am the CPRO, the Public Information Officer. I was here a few weeks ago, or a few meetings ago, and I invited you all to judge our bulletin boards from our bulletin board contest. So, walking away from the speaker for a moment, here we have all of our bulletin boards. And I brought ballots. So if you'd like to stay after the meeting and review the picture, so that you could see our boards and you could vote on our bulletin boards, it would really mean a lot to our staff. Also, I want to bring up that next week is the Classified School Employees Week, more commonly known to us as CSEW. And on Thursday, the executive board is going to be hosting a barbecue at the Chavez Huerta Center for Education, for all of the classified employees, from 3:00 until 5:30 PM. And we would like to invite you as board members, and we would like to invite the interim superintendent, lost my mind, and all of the other site administrators to come and join us. And if you feel like cooking, that'd be great, too, we have aprons. And so, we would also like to ask one other thing, and that is a view of Mr. Islam, is that our hours for the barbecue have been set from 3:00 to 5:30, because the majority of our staff is done by 4:00 in the afternoon. However, we do have some staff members, patrol officers, and others that do are on duty during that time, and we would like to ask that they have permission to come by and have, and join the rest of the classified staff for the barbecue, without any type of reprimand. Okay? Thank you very much for your time, and I didn't mean to interrupt you, I'm sorry.
That's all right. I'm sorry, I left you out. Now we will open public hearing. Any person wishing to speak on any item under the public hearing agenda will be granted three minutes to make a presentation. Public hearing pursuant to the requirements of the government code and board policy, the attached initial contract proposals submitted by California School Employees Association, CSEA, Chapter 203, for an agreement between California School Employees Association, CSEA, Chapter 203, Rialto Unified School District, and the Board of Education, is hereby posted in compliance with the legislative requirements for public notice. Can I get a motion to close public hearing?
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Montez.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Kelly. Preferential vote by our student board member?
Aye.
Board members?
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Ms. Gilbert, apologize for interrupting you. I think we have association members that would like to speak to you under the public comment. I think Lisa Lindberg would like to speak.
I apologize, I think I missed my call out there. Lisa Lindberg, President of the Rialto Education Association, I'm back. I guess I'd like to congratulate everyone who received promotions this evening, but I'm having a real difficult time doing that. I'd like to explain to the public exactly what that means when all these people get moved around in their positions. So let me explain it to you, and especially the members of the community who are here this evening, talking about the liaison positions that are being eliminated. So when you are a senior coordinator, and you become a director, you get a raise. When you are a coordinator, and you become a senior coordinator, you also get a raise. When you are a senior director, and you become an executive director, you get a raise, and you also get a secretarial staff to help you out with your business. So these jobs don't necessarily mean that there's more on these people's plate that got these promotions. It just means that they got a raise, because we all know that the teachers, and the classified, and the nurses, and the speech therapists, and the counselors are constantly getting more put on their plate, but they don't get a promotion, and they certainly don't get a secretarial staff. Now, my issue with this vote is that this district is constantly telling its employees how it is spending more money than it is taking in, and that that needs to stop. Well, apparently, it's not going to stop. So my take on this is that it's the same oil, but different snakes. Let's go on with some more of these positions. We now have two people doing the job that one person is currently doing, and traditionally has been doing. We've usually had one associate or assistant superintendent of ed services, but suddenly now, when we need more money, and we have less money, we now need two people to do this job, along with, of course, their own secretarial staff. So, when you talk about not having your liaisons at the schools, we talk about elementary kids not having counselors, we talk about how there's no PE at the elementary schools, we talk about how special ed has no cap on the class sizes, and they can just keep going up and up and up. And then we talk about other things, like counselors having to meet with 650 kids a year, and we talk about nurses who have a ratio of 1 to 3,200 kids in this district. Remember this, folks, the closer you are to a child in this district, meaning if you actually breathe the same air as they do during the day, the less you are valued. And that is evidenced by these promotions and these newly created positions that have never been in this district before.
Public information. The Williams Settlement Legislation Quarterly Uniform Compliant Report Summary, January 2014 through March 24th, is in reference D 2.1. Williams Inspections Report 2013 through 2014, reference D 3.1. Next, we move to the consent calendar items. All items on the consent calendar will be acted upon in one motion, unless pulled by the Board of Education members or the interim superintendent for individual action. May I have a motion to approve the consent calendar items E through J?
I'll make that motion, I do have some polls.
Okay. May I have a second, Mr. Martinez? May I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Yala. Now, Mr. Martinez, you may address your polls.
On G1, need discussion. On H3, need discussion. On J5, need discussion.
All right. G1, H3, and what was the other one?
J5.
And I had H7. And are there any other polls? Okay, we will start by addressing G1. Mr. Martinez?
Okay, thank you. It says, approve the educational study trips and locations for the 2014-2015 school year. Yet, my list was missing, and I have not seen anything to approve, other than a blank
Board, this is a standard, just you're approving any study trips during the, during next school year? And so, there's nothing, those trips being earmarked at this time as simply an approval for authorizing taking the study trips during the next school year. Dr. Levine, may I clarify further?
Yes, this is an approval of the process that we use to take study trips. So it's outlined in that the public knows the process for the different first step, second step. And then, as the trips come through my office and then, of course, overnight trips go to the board.
Again, this is for next school year.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Mr. Martinez?
Evidently, it wasn't clear enough for me to understand that it was, we are approving the process, not the trips. Thank you, President Gilbert.
Alright, number three? Item number three?
That was also pretty vague. That was H3. It said for, "Approve the agreement between Rialto Unified School District and Nancy K. Bowle Incorporated, doing business as the Counseling Team International." Reference H3.1. And it just seemed very vague to me.
Ms. Gilbert, I have, Mr. Harris is here to explain and clarify this.
Yeah, Mr. Harris.
Good evening, Madam Board President, Vice President, Board Members, Interim Superintendent and Student Board Member. And let me tell you, that jacket is sharp and I'm jealous. Thank you, Board Member Martinez, for pulling this item, giving me a chance to highlight the wonderful opportunity to enhance service to district employees. What this is, is part of, it's a benefit issue. It's part of an employee service that would enhance counseling services to our district employees that may be experiencing additional anxiety, different types of depression or different types of family issues. And they may not have the funds available to pursue some of this counseling through our health plans, who do charge a co-pay for that. Additionally, if you have a situation where you have a teacher whose source of anxiety may be coming from, let's say, a 28-year-old son that's dealing with substance abuse, well, a 28-year-old child would not qualify as a dependent on our health plans. So we could treat our employee, but we could not get any type of assistance for the source of the anxiety. Bringing this program, there are no co-pays and you don't have to be a qualified dependent on the health plan in order to get assistance. So you literally could take any family member in your house, they could get counseling services, they can get legal advice, they can get advice on dealing with, many of us are taking care of our elderly parents, such as myself. You can get advice and introduction to resources for that at no cost to the employees. So that's what this is. Most districts do offer an additional employee assistance program for our employees. And the goal would be not only for healthier employees, also to remove some of the anxiety or different issues they may be going through, but also on our health plans, where we're talking millions of dollars. One of our driving forces is outpatient mental health services. Our top three medications being dispensed are pain medication, respiratory, and then, yes, antidepressant medication. So this would help reduce our overall healthcare costs and it would also reduce some of our liability if some of these employees had another outlet to go to as opposed to suffering in silence.
Okay. Thank you very much and thank you for submitting this.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Harris. Next, we move to item number seven. Who brought that up?
I did.
Okay, Ms. O'Kelly?
Yes, I'd just like to state that the Parent Center is a great resource for our district, but we really must increase the participation and outreach to parents to make it effective. We seem to, the same parents seem to keep cycling through the classes at the Parent Center over and over again and we're not pulling in new people. We also need to have a concerted effort to recruit parents for participation of all ethnicities. I feel we are ignoring segments of our population that perhaps would want to participate also. We could, we could bring in speakers to spark interest, to talk about topics of interest to the parents. Could we possibly provide computer classes or ESL classes at the Parent Center? I see a host of opportunities here to really provide parents with the resources and training that they need. So my concern is to, I feel we really need to establish some measurable goals for the Parent Center that we can provide evidence that we have met. Ms. Jackson and Ms. Del Rio need to justify the increase in salary by documenting what they will be doing differently to warrant the increase. In the four years since they've been established, I believe they've had about four raises in, or increases in salary. So my concern is, I would like to pull this item if we could until, and allow Ms. Jackson and Ms. Del Rio to come up with specific things. What they have in the agenda is rather broad. I'd like to see specific things that they're going to do to help make the Parent Center more productive and more effective for our parents.
Okay. Ms. McGyver Brown is here. Maybe you can, you can, did you come up to speak on this item?
Yeah, this is Robin, going to clarify some of the concerns that Ms. O'Kelly.
Good evening, Board of Education. First of all, I'd like to thank you for considering this item. And second of all, I'd like to, we do have a document that shows every class that we've done over the past several years since we've existed and the number of people that have attended every single year on the different. So that's not a problem to bring and show you. We have increased our attendance. And yes, we have continued to increase attendance, but we know that we can do more. But we have increased in the number of people that have come to the Parent Center over the years. We have redesigned every single year to have more classes that deal with Common Core Nutrition, some of the things that parents really want to see. We do have technology classes as well. Our instructional technologist currently, Jorge Alvarez, he does teach those courses. We've embedded Common Core. So in the evenings, we have special event type of courses offered for parents, like the Common Core we had. And then we also had the AB 540 recently. We have our Dad's Night, which we've increased every year. And then also, particularly this year, we had in September, three consecutive nights for African-American families to target them in education and Jen Harper came to speak and Chief Leary came to speak on certain things for them. So we can provide you with any information that you so desire because we do have this. We did apply for the Golden Bell Award and will be applying again this year for that because we have increased our numbers and we feel we have a strong, sustainable program.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. McGyver Brown.
Okay, so I'll bring that information back to you.
Alright. So what's the pleasure of the board? Should this item be tabled? Or are we going to vote on it?
I would like to table it and I'd really like to see a specific plan of what they want to do. Because that's...
A motion would be appropriate and then followed by a second.
Would you please put that in the form of a motion?
I move that we table this item and allow Ms. Jackson and Ms. Del Rio to develop a specific plan of action as to what specific things they will do to make sure that the Parent Center is as productive as we can make it.
Okay. Did I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so the move then second that we will table item seven? All in favor? May I have a vote by Board members?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion is carried. Now, we'll move to...
I abstained on that, by the way.
I'm sorry?
Actually, I'll vote no on that.
Okay. Item seven? It was a four, one vote? One no, Mr. Martinez. Item five? Who brought that up?
I did. Item J5, "Approve Declaration of Need for Fully Qualified Educators" for 2014-2015 school year, reference J5.1 to 5.13, I believe. And I see that it is signed by an administrator that is no longer here. I just wanted to avoid any legal challenges. So I would like to have that, not pulled, but action taken on it, but it needs to be re-signed. At least check with legal on it.
Yes. Board, do you want to pull this? Yes, we can do that. I will ask, Rhonda, can you come clarify this, please?
Good evening. This is a resolution, this, well, actually, it's a declaration of need for fully qualified educators. We usually use this when we have substitute teachers that need to cover into a long-term assignment and we don't have people with a full single-subject or multiple-subject credential to cover the assignment. If we have somebody on maternity leave and they're gone for six weeks, we have to have a fully-credentialed teacher in there. Sometimes we have to use a substitute that is eligible for what's called a provisional intern permit. And this is what authorizes us to put that teacher in there with a provisional intern permit and to stay in the classroom for more than 20 days. We don't plan to use this for regular teachers. This is strictly for, if we run into the need with our substitute teachers, if we don't have enough subs with full credentials on our books. As far as the signature line on that, at the time that this was printed, we did have Mr. Adela's signature on there, but when we, the original is sitting on our desk and that would be modified to have Mr. Islam's signature on there.
That would suffice, thank you.
Thank you.
President Gilbert?
So we will not approve this particular item tonight?
You can with the modifications stating on your, saying that...
I would like to make a motion to amend that.
Yes.
Okay.
That we go ahead and sign that? That the interim superintendent sign that? And we can proceed?
Okay.
Needs a second, though.
I need a second?
Second.
Second, thank you, Mrs. O'Kelly. Are we all clear, all ready to vote? All opposed? I mean, all approved? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Motion is carried. Now, we have the other items to, we have all the items that were pulled. We voted on item five and seven. So now, may I have a vote to approve the remainder items in E through J? Preferential vote by our student board member.
Aye.
Vote by board members.
Aye.
Aye.
You understand, Ms. Kelly?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, motion is carried. Now, we will move to discussion, action items. Action items will be enacted in one motion unless members of the Board of Education request specific items to be discussed. Approve action items K1 through K7. Discussion action items are board approval only. May I have a motion to approve items K1 through K7?
So moved, but I want to pull three.
Okay, may I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved, Ms. O'Kelly, second by Mr. Martinez. And we will pull item three. Ms. O'Kelly?
Yes. Mr. Islam, where will the money for this fund come from?
It's a state grant. This simply asking board authorize us to establish the fund resource account number?
That's the account number?
It's the account number.
But the money's coming from the state?
That's correct.
Okay. Alright, that's all I want.
Thank you. Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And he knows? Motion is carried. Now, we move to item L. Comments from the interim superintendent, Mr. Islam? Your comments, please.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. We have a lot of events going on in our schools, please join. I know it's after hours, it's a very fun thing going on. Last night, we had a music festival at JU. It's a great event. The couple of the events I like to draw attention, May 15th, Carter Senior Award Event, 6:00 PM, and Rialto Senior Award Night at 6:00 PM at Rialto High School on May 20th. Please join and support our students, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Islam. Now, we will start with our student board member. Micah.
So, good evening, everybody. Thank you, President Gilbert. Excuse me, I'm a little hoarse today, so if I start coughing, I apologize. First off, I just wanted to thank, on behalf of all our DSAC students, thank the board and interim superintendent for your recognition tonight. It's greatly appreciated from all of DSAC students, thank you. DSAC has so much to offer us. We team build with middle and high school students and engage in leadership roles to prepare us for that world outside the district, as well as helped us grow as leaders on our campus. And just the experiences we learned with DSAC were great and, sorry, I'm just a little fidgety. Next, I would like to thank our ASV teachers for, if it wasn't for them, we wouldn't have been our DSAC students. Ms. Pelito, my ASV teacher is right here in the audience, thank you, Ms. Pelito. The opportunities and the lessons we learned from DSAC were greatly appreciated. They'll help me, I know, becoming a leader as I move on to college and just help me in my life. I just want to also let everyone know that our DSAC students decided to go on our annual DSAC field trip to the Museum of Tolerance so that we may learn of the oppression, the depression and the great horrors of the Holocaust. Just, the Holocaust is a sensitive subject with me. It's, I guess I'm sort of a little sensitive to, you know, great tragedies. It's, just, it's sad to believe that that such horrors were put on people where many of them lost their lives for just trying to survive. Just lost their businesses, lost their well-being, such as like Diary of Anne Frank. I read that in the 7th grade, I believe. And it's sad to know that a teenager like myself had to go through what she went through as she was in the attic and she had to stay there for two years. And when she finally was taken, she passed away in the camp and it's a sad subject.
You're doing good, you're doing fine.
That's good.
Okay. Okay, so on a positive note, I just want to apologize because the next board meeting, May 28th, I'll be having my grad night, so I won't be here. I apologize, everybody. I know you guys look forward to seeing me and stuff, but it's, that's okay.
But you will be here on June 11th.
Yes, we do. Yes, I will, oh, yes. Yes, I will be here. My last board meeting will be June 11th. I tried to get nice and fancy for you guys tonight so you guys have something to remember me by for the next few weeks. Just on June 11th, that's when I'll say my formal goodbyes to everyone. My final thank yous for all your encouraging words and encouragements, everybody's smiling faces. See you guys in the crowd. And before I end, I would just like to thank the board and everybody again. And also want to recognize my grandparents are back from the island of Samoa. Flew out here a couple of weeks ago. I just thank them as well for their support. Their support in my schooling and my football. My grandfather was a great man. I love my grandfather, oh, my little two cousins, sorry, Priscilla. Sorry, there you go. Sorry, there you go, there you are. And on that note, just thank everyone again for coming out tonight. Thank you for supporting our school district, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Micah. Ms. O'Kelly.
Yes, that's good, Micah. As, last night, I had the privilege of attending Eisenhower's Scholarship and Awards Night when our outstanding students received scholarships from the community and a variety of places. I know in years past, we've given away as much as $400,000 in scholarships in one year. So we have a long history of that, and it's very meaningful to me. And this particular class is my last class. They were freshmen when I, my last year I was principal. So they are special and dear to me, and I really enjoyed seeing them. And on that note, I want to congratulate our student board member, Micah, for his outstanding success at Eisenhower High School. Micah received numerous scholarships and awards, and including the CBL, the Citrus Belt League Male Athlete of the Year Award. So that's pretty big. And we are so proud of you, Micah, and look forward to seeing you again in June. And I want to thank you for cheering us all up at the beginning of your. I also, you know, heard a lot of things tonight, some concerns from the community. And I do want to say some, some people have mixed up funding sources and the purposes of funding sources and how things are being spent. It's not all just one big pot of money. And so there, if you have questions, please ask. It's too much to go into detail right now. But I do want to assure you that we are taking care of business. And I do want to congratulate all of the people who received promotions tonight. And there was a long thought process behind that. And we certainly know that the heart of education is the teachers and the people that, as Ms. Lindberg said, breathe the same air as the students. And we are going to be looking forward to looking at those issues and bargaining as the year goes on. But we had, we need a strong plan in place right now to try to improve instruction in the district. And I think with the changes that were made, that we're going to be able to move forward and make great progress. So I do congratulate everybody, and I thank you all for coming tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Kelly. Mr. Montez.
Good evening. Buenas noches. Well, geez, where to be in? I first would like to congratulate again everybody that was honored tonight. You know, the DSAC students. Thank you, Micah, for your hard work with that. And congratulations again for all the success. And hopefully you continue to be fruitful and successful in your future. And we wish you the best on behalf of the board. Congratulations on everything. I do want to say, I hope that everybody had a wonderful Mother's Day weekend. You know, some people celebrated Saturday, some people celebrated Sunday, some people celebrated both days, all weekend. You know, so, so congratulations to everybody who had a very happy Mother's Day weekends. I did have the opportunity to go to, to attend, along with my wife, attend the We Honor Our Own event on Friday, which was a great starter for the weekend, you know, after such a hectic week last week. You know, there was, there wasn't a better time to get together with some of the employees from the district and, you know, and watch the people being honored, longtime employees, 15-year employees, 20, 25, 30. And I believe there was 135-year employee that was honored. So that was really nice, you know, and you know, we're going through some tough times. Everybody knows, you know, we're going through a lot right now. Nobody knows, I can guarantee you this, though, nobody knows the full extent of the tough times that we go through other than these five board members up here and superintendent. You know, a lot of stuff comes out in the media, a lot of stuff, you know, is spread around. But the, you know, the depth of the issues is really taken care of in closed session. And, and it's a lot. It can be overwhelming. If it's overwhelming for the public to know what the public knows, imagine what it's like for us to know what we know and to have to deal with what we have to deal with. So I just want to assure the community and the district that we're working hard. We're trying to do the best that we can to really heal this district and move forward. Mr. Islam is doing a wonderful job sometimes. Let's give him a round of applause. You know, sometimes there's a lot more to people than just the person warming these seats, you know, behind these, on top, up here on this dais. But he really, he really is working hard with the board. We're working in unison to move forward. And we just want to reassure the community and this district that we're doing the best that we can and will continue to do so. I want to share a proverb. First, I'm gonna say it in Spanish because I learned it in Spanish, and then I'll translate it. But I learned this from one of my elders the other day because I try to talk to the, to my elders as much as I can before they go away. You know, so I try to learn whatever I can. And one of my elders shared with me, "A tiempos malos, ha que darle buena cara." And it's a metaphor.
During bad times, put on a good face.
And it's a metaphor, and I don't know if anybody's heard it in English, but what it means is, you know, to bad times, give it a good face. You know, I don't know about everybody else, but it seems like I've been putting on a good face up here for a long time, you know, and I'm going to continue to do so. But I want there, I want us to, we do have our good times too, but I really would like us to stay on a good time streak as opposed to a bad time streak. And I think everybody on this board wants the same. I know our superintendent, Mr. Islam, wants the same. And I know the people of this district and this community want the same. So we're working really hard. I know a lot of people are upset about a lot of things. We're upset about a lot of things, but we're doing the best that we can, given the circumstances that we're in. So thank you again, and remember, "tiempos malos, ha que darle buena cara." So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montez. Now, we'll go to my left, starting with Mr. Martinez.
Thank you, President Gilbert. Welcome to everyone and the audience web-wise and television-wise and the press. Nice to see your other half there, Beau. Nice to see you're with someone instead of just at home and you're here, so. Yeah, I understand the job. Okay. I voted against the reorganization. My take is the timing is wrong. It should be done by the superintendent, who is to be a permanent superintendent, yet to be hired. Good times will, will come when we are student-centric, focused on students, that is. And that will give us the winning streak that I've been asking for, for, oh, years. Micah. I apologize for being unable to attend Ike last night, but the $1,000 scholarship is coming your way from the Joe Martinez Foundation, so. It is to acknowledge your leadership, current and future. I expect, we expect, great things from you. We'll be watching you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Ayala.
Well, thank you, President Gilbert. I'll start with good evening, parents, staff and community. Lot to discuss, but I want to remind everyone that, you know, our number one priority is still providing opportunity for these kids to find success. And so the decisions that we make sometimes may be argued, but I can assure you that the hearts that I've seen within this board and staff were on the same page. Heard some comments on, you know, perhaps what teachers need and what their wishes are. And I can say that coming from the teaching profession myself, I have a lot of empathy for what was being said. I also remember when things changed that we needed help because I didn't want our school to have negative press or not find success. The new accountability rules made it difficult for teachers to find success without the coaching of people who had full-time in those areas. And being a board member here, I've seen that, you know, there are special needs and you have to have specialists in certain departments and areas that you need to find ways to free up their time so that they can guide us through the, through the proper direction, such as with Common Core. I heard some comments on the parent university. I actually had the opportunity today to go visit another school district. And I opened up my eyes because it was a new elementary school that just opened. And one of the things I'd never seen before was a special classroom. And you're thinking, okay, who was in that special classroom? Kids maybe with disabilities or maybe, you know, a certain grade attached to these kids or overcrowded or. I saw adults in an elementary school. And I said, wait, I've never seen this before. Now, this was a very creative principal who organized this. And how do you combine adults with our children who aren't credentialed? That's a very touchy area. But they understood the rules. No contact with the kids. Those parents were not to go into the other classrooms and break the rules. But they were there to do what? Whatever the principal said and directed in terms of helping the teachers with papers, helping them with assignments, helping them with projects, helping knit things for their kids' well-being. It was an eye-opener. So when somebody says, how can we get the parents more involved? It's real simple. Just get them closer to their kids. Thank you so much for this opportunity. This is a good board. This is a good community. And for those of you who are a little bit in the dark right now and feeling a little bit of pain, don't give up on us. We care about each and every one of you from top to bottom. And there's not anybody on this board who doesn't feel the same way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ayala. Thank you to my fellow board members. Sometimes it's hard being the president because you have to wait till the end to say what you want to say, and they have stolen all of your thunder. So anyway, just a comment on the reorganization. Remember some weeks back when we came to a point that we knew that we needed to move forward? I think I made a statement that said that. So as far as reorganization goes, we have to move forward. We have to be prepared for the next school year. We can't wait for a new superintendent. We have to move forward. The people that we have here at this district are great people, highly qualified people. And we need to move them in positions that will carry us while we go through transition. So I agree with the reorganization form that we came up with. Remember, we can always change. Nothing is written in stone. But to move forward for the 14, 15 school year, we can't wait for a superintendent that we haven't even started searching for. So that's how most of the majority of the board felt when we voted the way we did tonight. On a happier note, let me tell you some of the good things that I did this week. First of all, I'll start with Morgan Elementary. I was invited by our safety and security staff to come to their gang reduction intervention program that they had for second and fifth grade students at Morgan. Now, I want to say something. When we talk about the district and how our district, everyone from classified employees up to administrative, to the administrators in this district, if you really think about it, everyone is working for the good of our students. And I was so, so, how should I say it? I was just proud of our security staff. Mr. Chief Leary was there with Officer Ramirez and Officer Bernie, who the kids really love. If you haven't seen Officer Bernie, then that's something, we'll have to bring him back to the board. But it was just, just a hard feeling to see how our students really just love our security staff. They are not people who are meant to be like the Gestapo and we're afraid of them, and the kids aren't there to be engaged with them. They are there. They are doing something besides just being the bad guys. They are really engaged in helping our students in whatever area that they are. And Officer Bernie and Officer Ramirez, they, as Chief Leary said, they do this. They volunteer to do this, this particular class that they teach to second and fifth graders. And they also do it at Preston, am I right? At Preston also. So this is something for our security staff. We need to thank them for always being on the job and supporting our students, whether they are doing something improper or just molding them to help them to be more positive in their school career. We, I also went to We Honor Our Own, and it was a wonderful program. And I just want to say thank you to the staff that put on this program. Let's give them a hand. Because it was an elegant evening, very elegant. And I know that the people who were honored were very appreciative, that we took the time to show their, show them our appreciation for their service. And then I had a special invitation to a pre-Mother's Day tea at Garcia Elementary. That was so nice. Mrs. Goodman's class invited me to a tea that they put on for the mothers of her class. The kids looked so neat. They dressed up, the girls had on long dresses and the young men had on ties. And they served the parents. They sang songs and they did poetry. And they even gave me a book of poetry that they had written. I forgot to bring it with me. But our kids are working really hard, and I want to say thank you to our staff because through all the times of trouble that we've been through, our staff has not missed a beat. They are continuing to do their job, and I just want to thank you. One more thing, I also, today, the Builders Club from Rialto Middle School, along with Mr. Campbell, were there to talk about the events they had done for the Kiwanis Club. And then I saw Mr. Campbell here at night, tonight, with the DSAC students. So our teachers are working all the time, and we appreciate all that you do. So with that, I'm going to close. And are there any other comments? Thank you. May I have a motion to adjourn? I think we'll let Micah do it.
A motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved at second, that we adjourn at 9:13. Good night, everyone.